Everyone, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Council Meeting, Tuesday, September the 8th, 2015, at 9:00 AM in council chambers. Well, I'll call the meeting to order at 9:00 AM. And is there, are there any late items that need to be introduced? Nothing? Okay, thank you. And we do not have any delegations today, so we'll go right on to number D, which is Business Plan Updates, and we have a report from the CAO. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. This morning, we're going to have a series of reports from the directors that are not on vacation. And this is part of our administrative commitment to meet council's strategic direction of increasing transparency in the operations of the town, and also to provide members of the community additional information on the type of work that we do. So as you can see from the agenda, each director has their little area, and they'll be providing either, some of them provided you a written report in the package, but there'll also be some additional verbal reports, including myself. I'll be delivering my report, as well as a small report from the Director of Operations, who's on vacation at this particular point in time. So I'll just start off with running down some of the areas that I've been focused on, and this is in the last four months. We try and provide council the update on our business plan activities every four months. So I'll just head into the individual activities that I've been involved in, and perhaps if council has some questions, once I go through my report here, they can seek some further clarification. So going into it, one of the things that we have to do annually to continue to receive our resort municipality funding is do an annual report, and that annual report is now sitting on my desk. A little bit of a different bent this year in that we involve the Destination of Suyas in assisting and putting the report together. This is part of their, now part of their contract obligations, and they provide the tourism business component of the report. Second activity, we're all, I'm in the process of working with Destination of Suyas to renew their, the DO partnership agreement. This partnership agreement between the town, the Suyas Indian Band, and the regional district is the foundation of our tourism marketing agreement in the community, and it ends December 31st. Working on the strategic plan for the RMI, based on the stakeholder meeting that was held in June, this report is due at, or this new strategic plan is due at the end of September. And we had the meeting in June that reaffirmed the direction of the existing strategic report. There were a few more projects that were added, and this is to try and meet the provincial, the province's requirement to enable us to receive funding until what has been identified end of the program of 2017. And I know that council will be working very hard with the provincial government and other municipal municipalities, RMI municipalities, to extend this particular program. One of the activities that I guess actioned a lot of staff here in the, in the last three months was the implementation of the Level 2 water restrictions. This was not in our business plan, but we took on the challenge as directed by council, and that meant that a number of the different departments worked together to make this, make this project successful, including our communications area, and also bylaw, and front counter people certainly received, you know, need a big pat on the back for all the inquiries through the phone and over the counter that was ongoing. I've had ongoing communication and input into the water meter strategy. This initially, we thought would, the presentation might be today, but due to some timing on the project, we're looking at the first week in October that this, the final report will be delivered to council. We submitted a Canada 150 grant for the canal trail upgrade, asphalt and lighting. Unfortunately, we were not successful in receiving any funding for this project. We replaced all the trail and park messaging, give it a common appearance, providing our messages relative to bylaw. And this was a project that was led, you know, through our communications efforts and also public works to get all the signage up, and so now we have a consistent face. Our messaging is all in a consistent way to hopefully assist in our bylaw enforcement in the, in the parks and on the trails. We started the 2016 budgeting planning process with a workshop in August, and that information has now been correlated and will be taken to the directors for their comment, and then the next meeting will be held probably sometime in October between council and the directors. Recruitment for the new Director of Operations was successful, and Jim Dinwiddie will be starting here on September 21st. And I also worked on the senior planner recruitment, the first go-round, which unfortunately was not successful, but we're in the process of readdressing that at this particular point in time. So those are some of the highlights of the work in the last, you know, three or four months that have come through my door, as well as trying to respond to the various demands that are, you know, certainly come up during the summer season. So if you have any questions, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Romanko. Any questions from council? Well, you must be doing a good job if there's no questions.
Well, I hope so.
We agree. Okay, next is Corporate Services, and that would be Ms. Van Veenen.
Thank you. So I had you have a written report, and I'll go through it. I just won't give the numbers of the business plan numbers that we get a little bit redundant along the way. So under long-term solution for goose management, no further action was taken so far this year. We did not obtain a kill permit for 2015 due to the lack of success in 2014. There were so many restrictions put on the permit that we received from Canadian Wildlife Services that it just, it just wasn't successful, so we're looking at other options. For the expansion of the South Okanagan Transit System, BC Transit has approved the Transit Future Plan and presented that to council. The Transit Governance Committee is to be set up by the RDOS, and hopefully at that point in time, we'll be looking at whether this will be made a regional service or how that's going to proceed for this area. Water rights to the north end of Cottonwood Drive, no action has been taken so far this year due to higher priorities. This is a larger project as far as looking at the water licenses in that entire area. Reviewing options on washroom maintenance contract, the report is ready for presentation to council, it's just going through a final review process. Provide bylaw enforcement service through contract, that is ongoing. Current contract ends December 31st. Bylaw enforcement contractor was challenged during June and July with the influx of fruit pickers in the area. This took time away from other enforcement, such as unsightly properties. The groups have now moved on, and general bylaw enforcement duties have continued. And just further on that, with the increase in dog attacks, I know there's been some concern about that. We are enforcing the muzzling of the restricted breeds, and we're putting an ad in the coming newspapers to remind people with the restricted breeds that they must be muzzled at all times. So we are, we are enforcing that constantly as we see that happening. Review the need for additional RCMP support. The RCMP are doing additional patrols through funding received from, from the town. That's likely completed this year. I'll be waiting for a report from Corporal Beta on that. New animal control bylaw, this has been set as a priority for September and October. Laurie Scott is working on that and doing some research right now, and hopefully we'll have a draft for council by, by the October meeting. Provide emergency management services and protection, that's ongoing. A tabletop exercise is set for October 23rd, and an emergency executive committee meeting is being scheduled for September. MTI processing is ongoing. Thirteen tickets were issued for traffic offenses, three for other bylaw infractions, and 150 warning tickets have been issued so far this year. Unsightly properties, again, that's an ongoing, 74 unsightly properties up to October 24th. This resulted in over 113 inspections by bylaw officers. Bylaw adjudication, this review of this has been delayed due to higher priority items. However, in the meantime, the municipal ticket information system is still working to suit the town's needs. We expect a report to be coming to council before the end of the year on the bylaw adjudication, however. Review options related to contracting of the bylaw services, that report is, is now completed and will be presented to council shortly. Records management audit, policy and bylaw, the records have been reviewed and archived, and the policy and bylaw will be drafted shortly. Council agendas, to date, there have been 13 Committee of the Whole agendas, seven special open public hearing agendas, 15 regular open, and 19 special closed. Council minutes, to date, the same number of minutes were taken as agendas. At these minutes, there were the following numbers of resolutions passed, 25 at Committee of the Whole, 30 at special open public hearing, 155 at regular open, and 110 at special closed. All these resolutions are put into a tracking system by Corporate Services and forwarded to the department responsible. Bylaw administration is ongoing. This involves the records management of current bylaws, including consolidation of amendment bylaws and posting onto the town's website. FOI administration, we've received two FOI requests this year. The RFP for property insurance, the preliminary work has begun, and that is expected to be advertised in the next couple of weeks. Continuation of webcasting council meetings, the new encoder and camera are en route. So actually, after this meeting, since last time, we'll be using this camera and this encoder. We've got a break in council, and we're going to be getting our new encoder and a better high-definition camera, so hopefully the quality will be much better for the viewers. Develop the annual report, that was completed. And the following items were not included in the business plan but have come up mid-year and required to be dealt with. There was a tender, a need for a tender for the public washroom cleanings. The contract was tendered for August to December and awarded to Evergreen Building Maintenance. Tender for town building janitorial, the contract was tendered for July 15 to July 2016 and awarded to Evergreen Building Maintenance. A tender for bylaw enforcement services, the tender was awarded to Delo Enforcement Services to December 31st, 2015. We needed to hire a new temporary full-time community program supervisor. That was completed, and Kelly Law has been hired to take that on for one year. Students were hired for the year for both community services and operational services, and we hired two additional relief clerical staff for, for the organization. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Van Veenen. I just had one question. The council minutes, that all of the resolutions, et cetera, it sounds like we've been going for years. Is this, this isn't a four-month?
No, this is one year. This is up to date, to date this year, from January to-
Since January till now?
Yeah.
Well, we've been busy too, obviously, all of us. Thank you very much. Council, any questions of Ms. Van Veenen? No, looks good, and I'm glad that they, that the dog bylaws are being dealt with. That's been sort of a big issue in letters to the editor and people phoning and so on, so I do understand you're coming forward with another, with an update on that. Thank you very much. Next is Financial Services, Mr. Zackel.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So as council's aware, as of July, we've got a projected surplus in our operating funds of 116,900. Sorry. So, projected surplus of 119,600, or 116,900. Property tax collection, which ended July 2nd, went very well. Our percentages of revenues coming in were bang-on from previous years, and I do have to thank our frontline staff for their, their professional service that they provided, especially with the water conservation bylaw coming out at that same time and the number of phone calls that they were having to field. I feel that they did a very good job and should be commended for that. We've got a, or we had a total of 23 pending tax sale properties for the town of Suyas. We were down to now, I believe, five, and between Phyllis and I, we're working diligently to try to come up with solutions for these property owners so that they can get out of that tax sale position, so they're not having their property sold from them. So we're working on that. Finance is also working on trying to integrate our cemetery system from the old archaic card system to get it on to our VADAM system, so it's all electronic. We've got some scheduled VADAM training for, or VADAM Explorer, to enhance our reporting abilities through our VADAM finance program. So that's in the works, and that should be scheduled for the end of September. We're working on that. We're working on updating our tangible capital assets so that we can get that information off to Tru for updating that, our capital project for tangible capital assets. So that's another thing that we're, we're working on at this present time. Other than that, we've been busy, you know, getting prepared for, for this next year's budget, working on keeping, keeping up to date with these, these accounts for these years, or this year, so that's my report.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to comment too, that my office is right, right behind the, the front desk, and several times I went out and said to the, to the staff at the front desk, you handled that extremely well, because during June and July, there were a lot of people that came in, some not too pleasant, because they had issues that they wanted dealt with, and I, and I have to say that our, that whoever was out there, and there was a variety of staff that, that dealt with it, and they did an excellent job, so thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Zackel? Carry on, you're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
We have money. Planning and Development Services, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you. Start off with the Richter property. We now have three models for the sale and development of that town-owned piece of property. The first one was described in our initial expression of interest, and we are inviting proposals from interested developers to buy the property, develop it out with housing units, and set aside 15% of those as affordable units. We didn't have any response to that, though I found out in Fire Day that there could be somebody from CAMH, I believe, who might want to pursue that option. The second option was taken to council about a month or so ago, and the idea was that we could act as our own property developer. We would, we would service the subdivision and sell off individual units to interested building constructors, and we'd make sure that, again, that we retain 15% of them as affordable units. There's designs which are proceeding on that, and I intend to go, as I promised, to a housing symposium fairly quickly with local builders to find out what their reactions would be to the, to housing types. A third model is going to be discussed later today, a proposal by Mr. David Periduff, and that's a bit of a hybrid model, involves some, some level of partnership with the town, and I won't say anything more, more about that, it'll be discussed on camera. Whatever, whatever model we use, getting an affordable housing authority in place is an absolute priority, so we're going to be putting some time into that over the next few months. Pardon my-
Pardon.
Turning to environmental sustainability, I'm proceeding with the OCP review. I've, I fit the time in whenever I can. Developed about 18 sustainability objectives, and some indicators of sustainability success. And from that, I'm going to be going through the OCP and identifying areas where, where we're at right now, and then areas where we need to improve. And when I take that document to council, let's say in a couple of months' time, then I would like to go out to the public. So that is proceeding, albeit slowly, trying to fit it in with our other projects. Community and land use planning, we've, we had a major water zoning amendment with Paradise Park earlier. That situation is still continuing, according to some correspondence I got this morning, and we're receiving a lot of inquiries with respect to water zoning, and I suspect it's going to become more and more of a priority in our workload, and hopefully the new planner will be able to help out in that regard. I'm having to unfortunately advise a lot of people, I understand your concerns, but I don't have the resources at the, at the present moment, but we will get on it. 8,000 Cottonwood Indigo property, no, no action really on the development of that property. We have a previous owner, Quest Mortgage, that's got involved legally, and our solicitors are on top of that situation, we'll be reporting later on that one. ALR exclusions, as you remember, we had two, two exclusion applications that went forward. One last year was the Wish property. That fell afoul of improper practices within the Agricultural Land Commission itself, and so it's gone from the regional, sorry, from a regional board to provincial board, and they're going to be looking at that the middle of this month. The Effa property, the other one, which was from this year, I understand that the representatives of the regional board will be on the property this week, so that I think holds well for getting some early decision on that. The Park Trails and Alternative Transportation Plan, I've been working hard with StanTech, the consultants, and the, we have a charrette being organized for October the 14th, and there'll probably be about 725 stakeholders, including all of council, some of the, some of the directors, and as many people that we can get from, from the general public. There's involved in ongoing coordination of the Regional Ghost Strategy, involved in an update of what is now a five-year-old strategy. The RDOS have hired consultants, and they're reviewing where and where they can best put the efforts in terms of updating that particular document. There's also discussions continuing with respect to how we relate to Indian First Nations and vice versa. Cougar Mountain Municipal Boundary Expansion, we have not had the time to do anything on that this year that was on our business plan, but I do consider it very, very important. I know that council keeps identifying it as a priority, so I will want to be coming back at our business planning in a month's time and see how we can address that in, in next, next year's plan. We have a new consultation policy that's come out from the province, and lays out very, very clearly how we'd have to deal with EYB on that. Community infrastructure, the, our new fire hall, the closing date for the tenders was set for tomorrow, but at the recommendation of our architect, I agreed to extending that out to the 11th, and from all the information that I have, it would appear that we've got, we've got quite a few interested companies, both from, from the coast and from the Okanagan, and it should be quite a competitive competition, I think. I won't say anything further on it, because I will be presenting a report this afternoon at our open meeting. Jaya Park Plaza, Stages A and B, both Barry and myself are meeting with Fiona Bartman of Outland tomorrow to discuss what has to be done to complete Stage A, and when exactly it's going to be done, and how, and also how we will proceed with, with Stage B, including avoiding some of the pitfalls that we encountered in Stage A. So that's going to be a lengthy meeting tomorrow afternoon. New DCC bylaw, been working with, with Terry Underwood, and just about complete. There's a couple of, couple of items that he's gone back on my recommendation to take a look at, and we should have something, I think, within about a month that, that we can take to council, and before going out to the public. Best practice, according to the provincial manuals, is that you should engage the business community in a meeting, it wouldn't be a public hearing, in a meeting to, to discuss and present the bylaw, and maybe they have some suggestions of how it could be improved. Turning to governance and municipal management, earlier this, this year, we scanned 23 bankers' boxes of building permits, and they're all electronic now. That was thanks, thanks to Donna's coordinating efforts, and lined us up with Rico down in the, in the coast, that they're doing the work. And also our secretaries, both our permit ones and backup, have just done an incredible amount of work going through the, the old permits and getting them ready for electronic processing, and it's resulted in an incredible increase in customer service. Beforehand, when we got an inquiry about an old building permit, it sometimes would take us two, two days to find it. Now we've got it in 20 minutes and give all the information to the person concerned. So we've, we've got another 20, 24 boxes that are coming. They're more difficult to catalog for the Secretarial Service, because we're going back further and further and further historically, and some of the information is pretty scanty. But as soon as money's available, I'd like to complete that whole process and get those boxes scanned as well. We're also making substantial progress in electronic digital reporting of our new, of building permits. We have a VADAM system, which covers the permit issuing, and then NOR-TAC, which is an on-site system with a tablet, and the building inspector can go out there and record all the information from all the inspections he made, and over time, we expect to be able to print out a copy, for instance, of a stop work order right on the site. So this is really going to improve our, our operations. In terms of, in terms of stats, as of August 31st, 56 building permits have been issued for a total value of $5,223,000. That compares with $2,713 for the same time last year, so just about double. And then business licenses, 469 business licenses have been issued so far for a total value of, of 40, it should be 41,000, yeah, that's right, well, close to 42,000. And then I'll just close by, in terms of organizational development, we're still trying to get a senior planner, so we have a second, a second round of interviews, Barry and myself, this coming Monday, I think it's going to be with, with three candidates, and some of them look very promising indeed, so hopefully we're going to have a successful conclusion from that. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. You know, you've been very busy, obviously, and we certainly hope that a new planner to assist you will be able to help with some of the things that have, that have sort of taken second place, but thank you very much for all of the things that you've done. Counselor Campbell.
Just a quick question. For businesses, business licenses issued, if you know it off the top of your head, how does that compare to previous years?
There's been a slight increase in new, you know, additional permits, okay, which is, that's good news. It shows that business is expanding.
Yes. Counselor Youngberg.
Thanks, Mayor McCordough. Do I have this one?
Yes.
Yes, I do. Okay. Director Cunningham, can you tell me how you interpret low-cost housing? Did you do an outline and, and give it to all the interested parties? Like, how do you describe it to them?
Yeah.
Just quickly, you know, we're, we talked about this over the weekend, and a few things were, you know, that's a good point, so the, in the eyes of one developer, it means something, and in the eyes of another one, it means something else, and so I just wondered if you did a description.
Well, we accept, adopt, have in fact adopted the CMHC standard, which says that any family should not be expending more than 30% of their gross family income on, on shelter. That's, that's the usual definition. And then in terms of targeting needy families, we can take that percentage down, and you'll hear a proposal enclosed this morning where the person is advocating that he would reach out to 80, 80, you know, 80%, people that are within 80% of that particular target, of the median. So we do- So we do have definitions of it, but I understand there's a lot of numbers going out there, but the CMHC one is very widely accepted. We've always made the distinction between something which is affordable, affordable housing and things which are just less expensive units in the marketplace, there's a distinction. You can build less expensive housing, but if you're going to reach, you know, the people who have trouble getting a mortgage together and so forth and just want to start up before they become self-sustaining, then you've got to go in a bit deeper than just less expensive market housing. So what we're talking about is near-market housing where the person would get an offset of twenty, twenty percent on the purchase price of their house.
Okay. So affordable housing is more, instead of low-cost, affordable housing is really more to the definition, I think.
Yeah, that's right. And it should not be, I'll just close very briefly, should not be confused with social housing, which is totally subsidized usually by the province, but some major cities do it as well. Of course, our resources would never allow us to do that.
But the CMHC guideline is, yeah, it's really, yeah.
Yeah.
It's inappropriate, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Just one quick comment and often when you give these reports, you go by these things kind of fast, not you in particular, but, and I just wanted to draw some attention to our building report and the year-to-date statistics that are in there and my intention would be to do this in a regular meeting again this afternoon.
Right.
I often think that when you have achievements like that where your building permit totals are double what they were previous year, are almost double, that we should often have a moment of silence and just kind of sit around for ten seconds and savor, you know, the impact of that particular group of statistics that we get every month. Building permits are a very, very important barometer on how our economy is doing in our community and the last few years, those numbers have been not so great and we've been, you know, we criticize ourselves and everybody else and we always look for reasons why it's that way and we never, ever spend any time when that whole thing has been reversed and now it's a very positive thing, so I've spent, you know, the last minute and a half talking about it, so that's the only thing I wanted to do. I wanted to draw some attention to that particular report. It is available online and it's part of our meeting agenda packages. There is one in there today for this afternoon and it's a pretty important document and I think it's important that we stop and savor it every once in a while.
Well, thank you for that and I think we should follow the lead that's been provided by Pentic and when their numbers start to go up, I know the planning department there made a special effort, which I think we should follow, providing those numbers with a write-up to the local press so that we got the proper recognition that it should be. Thank you.
Thank you and we will ask you to do your minute and a half speech again later this afternoon. Thank you.
It might be longer.
That'll be fine. Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Cunningham? Okay, thank you very much. And next we have Operational Services, is that you?
Yes, I'll speak to Operational Services. Certainly in the last couple of months, something that takes precedence is our parks maintenance and certainly our parks maintenance went very well this summer. One of the challenges that Public Works had to address is certainly our Gyro Park was redesigned and so they had to take a look at, you know, what are the operational impacts, what are the types of things they have to do to keep that new facility clean and that. So that was one of the challenges. Also, the water restrictions going down to, you know, down thirty percent required the, you know, changing of all the irrigation settings and that, so, but all in all, parks maintenance went very well. Again, hired three very capable young people that worked for the department that did a very, very good job as well as our regular crew. One of the efforts that wanted to be focused in on this last summer was our Main Street and one of the things we wanted to do through the Public Works Department was increase the number of bike racks on Main Street. Unfortunately, we didn't get to that. We got them fabricated. Those bike racks are very, very expensive. I don't know why, but they are and so our Public Works took on the challenge of fabricating them and they did and they had them all painted up, but we just ran out of time before we could actually install them. The second effort in the Main Street was the extension of the Main Street with our self-watering planters and as you take a look at them on our Main Street, you'll notice that they did very well. You can't even see a planter in around all the foliage, so that's something that we'll be taking a look and bringing to council of whether or not we want to get more of those units in around town and have them placed. They're not cheap, but they certainly add to the attraction in the community. Another kind of focus area is our recycled water, the distribution of our effluent. This year, it took us longer than we thought it would, but we did get the school on eventually onto recycled water. There were some issues relating to what we were told their equipment was, their irrigation equipment, which wasn't actually the equipment they had, so we had to do some additional work in that area and, but eventually we did, so we did save a large amount of drinking water and brought them on to the recycled program. Just a quick report on that right now is that, given the summer that we had, our system is now taking in through our nine-eight pump system, which is water from the lake into Lagoon Number Two, because the golf course and all our recycled water programs have drawn down our resources there. So our Lagoon One is at winter storage level. Lagoon Two, we're taking in water into it and then distributing it to the golf course and out to other areas and Public Works will be monitoring those numbers to bring down those storage levels. There's no forecasted thought that we'll have to use our infiltration system at all this year, given the amount of water used that's come out of there. So that's a, that's a good news story and just supports a lot of what has been said by the administration over the last few years, is that our very wet springs for another number of years was impacting our ability to meet, to draw down on our lagoon levels and certainly this last hot summer proved that to be true. Other projects, major disruption to irrigation area number eight due to Fortis Transformer issues, that caused us some issues between August eighteenth and twenty-fourth, but everybody worked well together in terms of Public Works and Donna with the communications and front counter staff and were able to do the appropriate informing of all the affected parties and carry out the needed fixes. Something that would be budgeted in 2016 is upgrading our pump house electrical systems and so this was budgeted for next year. We just missed out on the year and unfortunately the transformers, Fortis Transformers went down. We did have a meeting in July with Department, Ministry of Transportation to discuss stormwater improvements on Main Street and the capital funding of it and, you know, for all intents and purposes, they recognize the province's responsibilities to fund half of the stormwater management component and in those discussions, we talked about, you know, what we wanted to do on Main Street in terms of water capturing and some bump outs and maybe some redesign elements, so they've been giving, they've been given a heads up relative to the budgeting process for them and hopefully the council's meeting with the Minister of Transportation will bring this to the minister's recognition that maybe some budgeting should be done for that, probably in 2017 for implementation or 2018. So we'll be, we'll be working on that in the near future. We, we being Public Works, the municipality, through the efforts of TRU, made an application to the Small Communities Grant Program for our sewer lift station. Unfortunately, we were not successful in receiving funding for this, for this project. We still have this project as one of our two projects for the gas tax program that hasn't been announced yet, so we're hoping that this project, because of its very large regional impact and the letters of support that we got from our partners, will make this a priority in that particular program. The White Sands Wall was tendered and unfortunately the tenders came in above our budget, so that they'll be, that'll be brought to budget back in 2016 and that's where the wall is collapsing in around the lakeshore in front of White Sands and we've got it shored up, it's safe in that right now, but certainly we want to do reconstruction there. Been dealing with a water issue over, although it's out of our jurisdiction, over by the co-op packers and this brought, this is brought to our highlight because where the water was accumulating into a farmer's field, it was, it's wearing away on the road and that's exactly where our irrigation number, irrigation main line is. So they were asking us to work around our main line. They've had some discussions with Argo and that and apparently we'll be looking at this later on, once we, our irrigation system is shut down for the year to try and address that, but certainly we did not want to try and address that at this particular point in time. And finally, one of our highlights was that we've been able to invest in training our public works staff in receiving crane operator certification. We had one or two of the staff that were involved, but we've made an investment in that area to expand the training in that area, so, and this is needed to, just our, what do you call it? The high arm with the bucket needs certification, so we've got more people that meet those qualifications, so that's, that's some of the highlights as well as the fact that Niran Desat will be leaving us probably at the end of September, a few days of work with the new Director of Operations as a, you know, orientation period and he looks forward to retirement.
Good. Thank you very much. I just want to comment on Main Street. So many people, visitors to our town have said, what a beautiful entrance to the town and how nice the flowers looked and like the ones outside Town Hall in the planters and in the, in the hanging baskets, they look terrific and they're very well-kept and they're nice and bright, so I know that's thanks to Paul's Greenhouses that provided those, but it's also a huge thank you to our town staff who upkeep and water and prune and fertilize all summer. So I think it looks really good and many people have commented how nice it looks on Main Street. The two things, bike racks were one thing that was mentioned and also the containers with the doggy bags for people to pick up after their dog. I know that both of those items are at Public Works and we're certainly hoping that, because we get lots of comments on it, we're certainly hoping that those will be able to be put up soon. So I think Mr. Dinwiddie, when he arrives, probably has a long list.
Yes, and it's growing.
Yeah, I bet it is. Did anyone else have any questions of Mr. Remanko? Thank you very much.
I can, I can speak very quickly if it's okay to, just a few of the items for Gerald who was on vacation as well.
Sure.
He didn't provide me with the report, but I know that certainly some of the things that have occurred in the last while was with the hiring of Kelly Law to replace an attorney leave of Sarah, so Kelly is, is working in the program supervision aspect right now and looking forward to spending a good year with us and we hope to, you know, bring all her new ideas to the table. Also, they had a very successful summer program and, you know, the averages were in around thirty-five kids in the summer program per day, which was, which is in around the normal numbers. Some work they did with the Desert Park Exhibition on the renovations to the, to the stands, ongoing communications in those areas and also with the Private Fitness Club, having the unfortunate fire there, there's been an increase in activity over at the Sonora Center. We've tried to manage their membership into, into our membership and the casual users and all in all, it's been a very good situation so far. Certainly the Sonora Center being used as an emergency response center on the one weekend was another activity that was unforeseen, but I think worked out very, very well and yeah, I think that's just some of the key highlights off the top of my head relative to that department.
Good. That was from Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Davis's report.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, thank you very much. So do we need, do we need a motion to accept those reports?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. Campbell and Rhodes, all in favor? Thank you. That's carried. Next is Mr. Remanko, our business walk votes.
Yes, so in the past, council has done a door-to-door to discuss issues relating to business in an effort to gain insights into what business, what town can do to assist business expansion and retention. Attached is information related to the suggestion to have a business walk during Small Business Week in October. Destination has requested that council consider some type of activity and that the activity be coordinated with Destination's efforts. Council, in terms of implications, council is provided with the opportunity to identify how local government activities and policy can assist with small business growth and retention. Organizational, council to participate in activities and staff will work with DO to take the information generated and bring back to council for consideration. There's no budget impacts and the actions to be completed sometimes in October and so this was certainly recommended that it come to council work with DO in an effort to participate in some form of small business walk and the council liaisons on the DO board take the coordinating role. Information generated by the walk would be considered in the 2016 planning or moved into the business for future consideration. So attached is a letter from the BC Economic Development Association that encourages this to happen and also there are webinars related to the, to the activity and this was brought to this table at the request of council to have this discussion.
Thank you. Just a little background on this, Counselor Youngberg and I were at an economic development workshop in Kamloops, I think it was about two and a half years ago, and that's when we first heard about this. It was, I think, originally started in BC through CORD, Central Okanagan Regional District and so when we, we thought it was a good idea. When we came back from that meeting, I emailed CORD and got some information from them. They were very helpful in giving us the, what that had worked for them and so I think it was two years ago, I think it was in May or June, that it was a combination of Town Council, it was Destination Estuias, the EDAC, which was the Economic Development Advisory Committee at that time, which has now been turned over to Destination Estuias and the Chamber of Commerce and we went out and talked to, it was coordinated, I believe, a map done by Jason Barch, who happened to be on the committee at that time and we went in groups of three and one council, one economic development, one Chamber of Commerce, something like that, and we visited all the businesses in town and, and I think we visited them all and collected all that information. There were three questions that were asked. There were three questions that were asked, and this doesn't have to be the same, but this is what we worked with. And it was just a way of sort of getting in the door and talking to them. Several businesses said, gee, we've never had anybody come and visit us before, so it was very positive. How is business? That was question one. What do you like about doing business in Osuys, in this area? And what can be done to help your business thrive? And we took notes at any, at all of these, these walks, and I believe town staff coordinated it, and we, so we do have that, that information. Now that the EDAC Committee has been sort of disbanded and turned over to Destination Asuys to look at, I, I certainly think that it makes sense to, to have a look at this again. Because it's been planned once, it may be a little easier. I think Counselor King is, you're the economic development at, at, for Destination Asuys, and I would certainly recommend that we, that we look at this again. We may want to, to have a look at changing slightly, but it worked in the past. It was done, from what I can tell, on, in 2012, was the first time it had been done in B.C., and I think it's been done in several areas since then. So that's just what I just wanted to say. Anybody else want to comment on it? Yes.
I think, Jen, we, we hear from a lot of the same voices on a regular basis, which are people that are a little more engaged and demanding of the municipality. I think there's a, there's a huge benefit to going out and speaking to the ones we don't hear from on a regular basis. Some of them new to the community, some of them that have been here, that can offer some of their experiences that have been here for several years. So is this a situation where we can put this motion on the table, or are we, is this just for discussion?
Well, I, I don't know that there's a need to put a motion on, it's a council activity, so if Council wants to proceed with this, it's just a matter of, you know, coming to a strategy relative to how you want to approach this.
Counselor King.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. As the liaison, I will talk to DO and make sure this goes on the agenda. They happen to be having a meeting coming up at the end of the month for discussion there.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Just going to mention that the last walkabout that was done, there was a report that we generated. That would be valuable information to share that part of doing this, if we could maybe dig that up. And had some really, really interesting stuff in there about how, you know, the feedback and how it was compiled, and some of the results, those questions that were asked.
Okay. We'll, we'll look through the, through our records and provide that. I recall that report.
Because you were part of it, and I think Debbie Gagne also typed it up, so I think she, yeah.
Yes, I, I recall doing the summary.
Okay. I, I'm wondering about leaving it to the end of the month, Counselor King, if it's going to be done in October, and it maybe should be done then, only because, yeah, because we don't want to leave it till the winter storms come, although maybe that's a good thing, who knows? But some businesses will, I would think, would close down because they're seasonal. So can we sort of leave that with you to, to have a look at?
Yes.
Get this information and see what can be done as soon as possible? Does that make sense?
Yes, and that's a very good point you make relative to seasonal businesses, and if they, seasonal businesses have closed, perhaps even a letter or a survey could be sent, sent to them, as, because I don't think that was done the last time. I think it was, it was a door-to-door. Whether or not the seasonal businesses were caught, I'm not sure.
It was done in June, which I think partly for that reason, because it did catch most of the businesses that were open. And there were letters that were written, that were given to some businesses if they were not available to speak to us. So that kind of thing probably is, is all together with that report.
Yes, I, I recall now that some of the businesses were too busy to answer the questionnaire, so at this, probably having it in, at this time, there may be more of an opportunity to have an exchange.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Youngberg.
Yes, Mayor McCordough, I think it's really strategic this year because of the issues that we had with the smoke and all sorts of problems with the housing for staff and, and other issues that, you know, we already are aware of, but we sure would like to hear from the businesses. So I think it's really important we plan this and get on with it.
Get it done quickly. Thank you very much. Anything else? So, we're, the action is that we're just going to leave this with, with Counselor King and DO, and we're kind of on board. I'm sure all of Council will take part. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, could I ask for an adjournment? Thank you. Counselor King, Counselor Youngberg, all in favor? Thank you. That's, we're adjourned. We'll take five minutes before our next meeting.